High School Board Meeting. I call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. If you can all rise and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so correspondence.
I was just confirming that we don't have any, right, Mrs. Morin? Okay. Thank you.
Good news, Brady.
So, the music department just had their Austria trip, which I believe is going to be touched on a bit more, so I'm not going to give too many details there. This Thursday, Roca Capital will be holding their inductions in the theater right here, I believe at 6:30. Not entirely sure on that. Last week, along with this week, students have been taking the AP tests from College Board. So far, we've had Biology, European History, Microeconomics, Chemistry, Human Geography, Government and Politics, English Literature, Statistics, World History, US History, and both Calculus classes, they've all had their tests. And then this week, there's going to be tests for English Language and Composition, Physics 1 and 2, Spanish, French, and Psychology. Students who perform well on these tests will have the ability to skip out some of those first-year classes in college, and so we'll just let them get to higher-level classes right away. Next Thursday, May 22, Modaco will put on their annual dance gala, which consists of a variety of student-choreographed pieces. This Wednesday, the music department will have their May concert, where members from all open-level music classes will perform. Next Tuesday, Student Council will be holding elections for all their class positions. And then lastly, academic awards tonight will be held on May 29.
Thank you, Brady. Ms. Bean, are you down there?
I'm here. Peer Outreach delivered over 20 Easter baskets to the Farnham Center. Again, the Farnham Center is an alcohol and drug rehabilitation center for adults. They gave adult toys and small gifts to the children. This was spearheaded, once again, by Senior Maddox Turk, but all members helped assemble the baskets. They also assisted in Teacher Appreciation Week by making themed baskets for teachers to enter a raffle to win. This was received well by faculty and staff. Peer Outreach is planning an ice cream social event this week to both get the word out about their club and have students at Gulfstone High School have fun, and they're hoping it will be a smile-inducing event. And lastly, Peer Outreach members are getting the word out to all Gulfstone students that GHS has been given a grant to allow any student to participate in the New Hampshire Team Institute Summer Leadership Program, held at a camp over six days at the end of June. This program normally costs $950, but the grant will cover that cost, and they hope to send at least six students to the camp this summer. Please spread the word. Gulfstone students have attended this in the past, including student rep Lily Hazelbaker, who anecdotally stated that the camp can indeed be meaningful and affect real change. And co-advisors John Webb and Charisse Selter are available if you want to know more about that. And that's the news that I have from Gulfstone High School.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bean. Mr. Davis?
Last week being Teacher Appreciation Week, the staff would like to say another big thank you to the school board, MVP, the MVMS administration, and the school community as a whole. We appreciate all your wonderful words, amazing snacks, goodies, and ultimately, all of your support. I think we pretty much decided that this week is going to be Teacher Diet Week after all the snacks from last week.
Wellness Week.
Yes, Wellness Week. Huge thank you to Ms. Ilak and Ms. Staples, who are amazing art teachers at MVMS. They had all the students create a flower for all the staff and a personalized message, which were hung up in the cafeteria for everybody to see. And in honor of Staff Appreciation Week, Ms. Nato's reading intervention students used their current topic, which was poetry, to write poems in appreciation of the staff, and they handed those out to the staff, including all the cafeteria workers. This theme this month at MVMS is self-control, which being the about 30 days left of the school year is a great one. The Scholastic Book Fair is going on right now. It's the Buy One Get One Free, which is pretty popular. They're selling out quick. May 15th and 16th, the Drama Club will be performing Beetlejuice Jr. I do not have the times of that. The 8th grade promotion ceremony will be taking place at St. Enzim's College on June 12 at 2:00 p.m. and will be followed on June 13 by the 8th grade recognition dance and celebration from 6 to 8 at MVMS. The 2025-26 course selections for MVMS students are open starting today and will run through Friday, and parents can access those through Power School. The Flex program had an amazing trip to the Sea Science Center in Manchester. The students had a blast and had the opportunity to participate in a huge number of interactive learning experiences at the center. Ms. Bishop, Droger's 5th grade class presented their research on what it was like to be a passenger in the Titanic in first person, included them getting into costume. The students learned a lot about what it was to live back in the early 1900s. And on May 17, students will participate in the Saint Benedict's Chess Tournament. This is the third tournament that the MVMS students have had the opportunity to participate this year. And on May 28, they'll be actually holding a chess tournament at MVMS, where all students are able to attend and participate in the tournament. MVMS Spring Concerts will be taking place on the 16th and 17th of May at MVMS. And lastly, from May 19 to May 23, the Artists in Residence will be at Mountain View working with the 5th graders on several projects. And that's it from MVMS.
Great, thank you, Mr. Davis. Go ahead, Wendy.
Thank you. Just a few things to add. Over at Glenlake, Bartlett, and Maple, they would also like to thank the school board for breakfast and for recognizing them, and also all of their parent groups for all of the different things they did in all of those buildings. Also, I wanted to let you know that both at Maple and at Bartlett, we are going to the YMCA with our 3rd graders. The YMCA received a donation from one of their members to bring our 3rd graders over to do water safety. So, students are learning how to handle if they're alone and they fall in water, or if they're with somebody and they fall in water, some of those lifesaving techniques. Bartlett went last week. They split their classes up into two different days, rave reviews from the students, the staff over at YMCA, and from our teachers. And then this Thursday and Friday, our students from Bartlett, I mean Maple Avenue, are going. I'd also like to mention that we were trying to work out timing with lunches and everything else and trying not to disrupt the school day for other students. The YMCA was nice enough that they purchased lunch for all of our students last week and for this week as well. So, we love our relationship with the YMCA. They do so much for us. As a reminder, they also do our 6th grade step-up activities that we do with New Boston, when our New Boston students are joining us for 7th grade. So, just to shout out to the YMCA for all the great things they do for our community. I'd also mention that coming up, as well as Mr. Davis was talking about Step Up Day activities, our Mountain View ambassadors are going to be going down to Bartlett and Maple Avenue. So, students from Mountain View going down, answering questions, talking about clubs and athletics and other things to start that process to welcome our 4th graders up to Mountain View for next year. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Wendy. Alright, any board members have accommodations? Good news? Anyone? Nope? Okay, alright, moving on. Is there public comment? Alright, you can come down to either microphone. Just say your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Jason Cody.
Is that on? Is that mic on?
Sorry, I figured I'd switch it up so you guys wouldn't have to see my behind. My name is Jason Cody of 465 Tibbetts Road. I'm here representing the Lacrosse Booster Club, executive board member. I've got another board member here as well with me, as well as the Football Boosters, Kevin Smart and other members. We have met together a couple of times, pretty much a very large number of Booster Club members to discuss the advertising and sponsorship initiative that we are trying to ask the school board to pass. Very few things can you get a lot of Booster Club and individual sports members to agree on. This seems to be a very good topic, and I have not met a person yet in the school district that disagrees with this aspect. To allow the school district to utilize these resources, and resources that, of course, as you all know, are very tough to come by, which are funds, to do that without involving taxpayers, without involving, really essentially, the school board taking care of the project. You have towns like Manchester, who's going to begin using it, a company called Powerade, which handles all aspects of the advertising and sponsorship. They take a percentage of it, and then the rest of the percentage literally goes back to the school district, where it is held by the athletic department, and then it is divvied up where it needs to be. You have London Dairy, you have Spalding uses this, you have Merrimack as well. Multiple towns and cities throughout the state use this advertising and sponsorship at the perspective for their school districts. I think it will be an incredible benefit for Gulfstone people to do. And I think that a lot of questions such as, "Well, if we have an advertising company and we don't like them, or they do something that's bad in the community," you have more clauses and contracts. I ask that of the company. The company's like, "They've had it before." They just get rid of the company, and the sponsorship comes right off the fence, or wherever it is, immediately. There's no questions asked. So, we shouldn't have to worry about that funding usage. It could be part of an emergency fund. It could be part of whatever the school district decides. Right now, currently, and I'm not speaking, I can only speak to the current Athletic Director, Ryan. Fantastic. I have not the response that he gives all the boosters. The involvement that he's been with all of us has been incredible, fantastic. And to not give him another tool to accomplish what we're doing as a community just does not make sense to me. I can't figure it out. And I'm hoping that you guys see this kind of the same path that we do. Right now, you have a baseball team that's ranked #2 in the state. We have wonderful athletic gear. A lacrosse team that's doing wonderful, boys and girls. Football team that has, you know, you... Everybody's proud of the community athletically that we have right now. And I would just hate to see that opportunity of creating revenue to help benefit them more go to waste. And that's why I just want to express that to you guys. I know you guys are going to be talking about it. And if you have any questions, I've done some research on this. My name is Jason Cody, and please get ahold of me. Also, Kevin Smart has done it as well. But like I said, very few times can you get a community of athletic people to agree on something. I have not met a person yet, so please, take this the time you think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone else?
But don't say the score, please.
Right, don't say "shh." Hi, Nancy.
I'm short, sorry.
That's okay.
Nancy Peterman, New Boston. I just wanted to make the school board aware of a House Bill for 466. It is proposing to make the Youth Risk Behavior Survey put out by the CDC an opt-in versus an opt-out survey. I was up at the State House testifying for this bill. It has become, made aware of me in the last few years that this survey is not what we thought it was. In 2017, this survey was finally made that it had to be an opt-out situation so parents could actually opt out of this non-academic survey. It's the only non-academic survey that's allowed in a school. I have made you guys aware of that in the past two years about that, too. Recently, the questions have changed, and they've become very inappropriate. They violate children's Fifth Amendment rights. A lot of the questions are, "If you gave these to your coworker at work, it'd be sexual harassment in the workplace." It's very unethical to survey children without informed consent. Parents have no idea what's on these surveys unless they really look at them. And one of the things, and one of the sad testimonies we saw and heard was how triggering some of these questions are for some of the students. We heard about students that had already been sexually abused or assaulted or had thought of suicide. We heard of one student that, after taking the survey, did commit suicide. This is not a survey that you're required to give to students. This is optional. So, I would like the school board to think about this. Should we give this survey? It's given every two years. Should we put this in front of our students? Is this acceptable? Do we need to take time out of the school day? This survey is usually given in January in Gulfstone High School. Not sure exactly. I think it's about the same time in the middle school. I know in January, we're getting ready for midterm exams. And then the biggest complaint I have about this survey is we're finding out that it's definitely data collection. We're not so sure it's anonymous anymore, especially the schools that are using the Chromebooks. Ours aren't using the Chromebooks, but a lot of schools are. In fact, the Chromebooks had a filter on it over in Hillsborough during the school district, and their filter would not allow them to take this survey because of the questions and the information it was asking for. So, I just want to make you aware of that, and I would hope the school board would investigate and say, "No, that you don't need to take time and money and take teacher time and academic time to do this survey. It's not collecting the data they think it is." Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else for public comment? Alright, then I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move on. We have a presentation.
Mrs. McCann.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I have some students who are going to talk in just a couple of minutes about the trip they recently took to Austria, and the experience that they had while they were over there. Before I did that, though, I did want to take advantage of the fact that we did just get our SAT initial data and wanted to share some of that information with you. Our students this year had a 37-point jump in their overall scores. So, we're really, really proud of the work that they have done. But I also wanted to take just a couple of minutes and talk about what the scores mean, because I don't know that we always do a good job of telling that story and explaining the data. I think it's very easy for people to point to what are considered the proficiency scores and talk about whether or not schools are being successful. And the state of New Hampshire does not use that word proficiency in relationship to the SAT scores well. The SAT was, maybe about a decade ago, started being used at the high school level as the state assessment. And at the time, myself and Frank were part of the administrative group across the state that really advocated for that. We see a lot of value in students taking the SAT. Not only, once they've had it, do they have it forever. Students can use it when they choose to apply to colleges next year, five years, 10 years down the road. But we also have students who are coming back. Every year, graduates... I get calls four or five times a year from graduates looking for those scores. They use them for professional assessments. They're able to replace different test points that they have in their workforce with the SAT, because it shows a basic level of literacy and math skills. And so, it's just, it's always there. It's a good resource to have, and it allows every single student the opportunity to have that for the lifetime at no direct expense to them, where it is the state assessment. But when we talk about those benchmarks, the SAT is not a pass/fail test. It was never intended to be. It's designed to be comparative. It was designed for college admissions. It was designed to compare students who were applying to schools. And when they talk about that benchmark of the English test, the benchmark score of the math test, that benchmark is the point at which 50% of the test takers scored above that and 50% scored below it. So, it's a moving number, and it's based on participation, and it's meant to be comparative. So, when we look at how our students do compared to the state, compared to other schools, compared nationally and globally, that's how it's intended to be used. That comparison is not designed to say, "40% of our students were proficient in math, but look over here." That really is what the test is designed for, is to be comparative. And I'm just going to throw one last piece at you. 37.7% of Americans have a bachelor's degree. So, when 70-plus percent of our students are proficient on the English language side of this test and 40-plus percent of them are proficient on the math side, which is designed to assess their college readiness, they're being successful. So, I just wanted to share that data, and we'll be getting you more details about the scores. The one other piece I will share, this is initial data based on the students who took the test. Unfortunately, we are seeing an increase in the number of students and families who are refusing to test. So, there will be an adjustment. You know, if you don't hit 95%, for every student that would get you to 95%, as Euro gets factored in, we worked really hard, Melissa Mizoney hunted kids down, and we got to 94%. So, there will be some adjustment, but they did a great job, and we're really proud of the work that they showed. And we just wanted to share that and also talk a little bit about exactly what those scores mean. And then, we're going to get to the fun stuff. So, we just spent 10 wonderful days in Austria and Germany, and I am excited to have Kaelin Emerson and Dan Feiler here to talk to you about that trip. They've got a video to share as well about that experience. And Brady was there, too, so feel free to jump in if there's anything there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come back over on this side.
Cool. So, as mentioned, Dan and I were two of the 76 members on this Austria trip from April 23 to May 2. Throughout the trip, we attended cultural and historically significant sites, including the Sean Bruin Palace, where the Austrian monarchy ruled for countless generations, their summer home, and countless other locations. While this trip often included sites such as these, our focus was on the musical connections we built with the communities of Gross Seegardt in Austria, as well as the village in Holstadt through our student performances, which Dan can speak up a little bit.
So, yeah, our student performances, so we performed two concerts while we were over there. Each of them were about 60 to 90 minutes. We had quite a few ensembles. We had band, chorus, orchestra, and we also had a jazz band, which was made up of select members through an audition process. Our concerts weren't done just for fun. They were done to raise money for the towns that we were playing them in. So, at our first concert, which was in Gross Seegardt, or Gross Seegardt, we raised €1,134 for their town and their fire brigade. Through that concert, we also presented some Gulfstone Fire Department patches. We worked with Town Administrator Derek Warren to get some patches, and they gave us some as well to bring back and get to our fire department. In our second concert, we went to this beautiful, it was really amazing, village called Holstadt, and it was, it didn't look real. You'll see it in the video, if I can get it to play in a moment. That concert was done in an effort to kind of raise money for the church that we performed in. They had some stonework that needed to be worked on. So, that was kind of the reason behind that concert. Yeah, that's our concerts. We kind of focused kind of on American music and jazz and just American things that weren't sort of related to their culture, just kind of to bring that culture over. And I think, as you said earlier, not in the presentation, but earlier in discussion, it shows how music is such a universal language despite it being an actual different language.
You don't have to know what people are saying to know that it's great.
So, now, I am going to try and pull up my video. I don't know if it's going to work, because my computer keeps crashing, but we'll see.
Mr. Borget?
I might need you. Let me give this a go. This feels so awkward. It's so quiet in here.
Can you sing?
Yeah, yeah.
Does it sing while we're waiting?
Have you got it?
She can sing. I can't. Alright, let's give this a go and see if it works.
Nice.
So, before you question me on my music choice for that...
It kind of felt appropriate.
Yeah.
I liked it.
It's actually from a band that is from the areas that we live in, too.
Oh, cool.
I thought that was interesting.
As far as personal experiences go, Dan mentioned it a little bit, but honestly, the biggest takeaway, which I found kind of funny, was how truly involved all of the communities were in learning multiple languages young. It was very common to find someone who spoke both German and English, although granted, we were definitely in areas that would be considered tourist traps. So, there was probably that aspect to it. But overall, they were very, very good about it. And it was kind of embarrassing as an American to go over and be like, "Oh, I am pretty much incompetent when it comes to German." Otherwise, you have some small greetings and being able to order coffee on a cafe. Otherwise, they were very, very receptive to that, and they were like, "Oh." Immediately knew as soon as we walked in, "Yep, you're American, aren't you?" It was a really great experience. And another thing about it was the music, obviously, was very universal. So, if we couldn't communicate on basic levels, like, "No, not that one, this one," we were able to figure out through music, and it was great overall. Fantastic experience. I'm so glad that I was on that trip.
Nice.
If the board has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Anything to add, Brady?
Um, yeah. Well, one of my main takeaways from it was definitely, it kind of made me appreciate America more almost, which I know is kind of silly. But, um, like, as Kalen and Dan were saying, there were so many amazing sights there. And it kind of made me realize that maybe we don't take what we have here in the States for the value that it is. Like, um, yesterday even, I was on, I was on a run just in Ware. And, um, the scenery there, it's amazing to look at. And, you know, you live, you live with it your whole life, you don't really notice that. But then you go somewhere else, and they're not all that different, but it's just the fact that it's somewhere new. And they're both beautiful, and I just feel like it really brought, it brought, it made me more aware of what we have here in America, as well as what's all over the world.
Nice. Nicely said.
And you brought them all back. Well done, Mrs. McCann.
Although I will say, a few of them mentioned the coffee. We did leave a trail of destruction of coffee machines behind us at every hotel. So I think by the time we checked out every single hotel, because the coffee was really good, and we had a lot of people, and I think on the first morning, I had someone say to me, "I've already had four cups." And the machines did not live up to that abuse, but other than that, it all went well.
Awesome. Thank you. Does any board members have any comments, questions?
I would just share, I've been to both of those countries and where you were. It is spectacular, and I'm so excited that you guys had the chance to go there and to experience it. That's an incredible opportunity. I've shared with board members, I found my love of travel when I was a high school student. I went on an international trip to Spain when I was a junior in high school, and I have traveled nonstop ever since. So this can be like your first trip, and it could be the first one of many, many, many trips. So, thank you for sharing.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Well done.
Appreciate it.
Great video.
Yes. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the approval of the April 21st meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to read them? Take a motion if somebody wants to give it.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 21st.
Alright, so I have a motion by Rheta. Do I have a second?
I'll second Vanessa.
Vanessa, thank you. Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Teachers, students? Are those three yeses? Alright, three yeses. Alright, motion passed. Alright, moving on to committee reports, manifest. Caroline?
Alright, so, we have a manifest for April 23rd to May 12th of 2025, and I will take a motion to approve the total manifest of 2.2 million 191,166 dollars and 20 cents.
Alright, so I have a motion by Caroline. Do I have a second? Who's that, Jack? Alright, thank you, Jack.
So, a breakdown of the manifest includes payroll taxes and benefits in a total of 1,667,297 dollars and 9 cents. Our special ed activity, some special ed contracted services, out-of-district tuition, and transportation amounted to 63,710 dollars and 74 cents. And then our general expenses column included a asphalt repair to the Mountain View Middle School in an amount of 6,396 dollars. We paid for books, equipment, and supplies at Amazon for 27,332 dollars. Blue Wind Services performed some HVAC and plumbing repairs for 10,810 dollars. We also had a budget document tech, which was our copier service and managed printout. This is a quarterly service, which amounted to 10,769 dollars. We had facilities cleaning supplies from Cleanorama for 7,356 dollars. Our telephone service through Consolidated Communications was 6,964 dollars. Our propane through Dead River was 18,976 dollars. Electricity was a little less for Eversource at 18,148 dollars. We paid GovConnection for some IT equipment, 13,825 dollars. I believe that is laptop trial that we are doing. We paid Home Depot Pro for facility supplies and equipment at 27,941 dollars. Pelmac for security prevention, maintenance, and repairs, 9,742 dollars. Then we had St. Anselm College received 23,203 dollars, and that was our rental fee for our ice hockey in the wintertime. And then, lastly, our SAU assessment was 127,802 dollars. So that whole column totaled 309,264 dollars and 20 cents. And finally, our food service through Performance Food Service was a total of 32,863 dollars for food and commodities.
Alright, thank you, Caroline. Anybody have any questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Teachers and students? Yes. We're unanimous. Motion passed. Alright, Scott?
Alright, so the next one, I'm gonna ask Randy if he wouldn't mind coming up to the podium in case there are any questions.
Or you can just stay where you are and grab the mic, and you can just answer it there.
So, before we get started on the Mountain View Middle School Cistern Project Bid Award, I wanted to let the board know that I provided a list of suggested motions for this evening because there's a lot of activity tonight. So this one would fall under number five. But, so I wanted to share with the board that Randy and I opened up the bid awards for the Mountain View Cistern Project Phase Two. And essentially, the good news is that we had budgeted 300,000 dollars for this project, and the bid came in lower than that. So you'll see in your packet that there was a combined bid between two companies. One company does the lining of the tank itself, and the other company is doing the repairs, et cetera. So the total price tag came in at 285,392 dollars. And I wanted to share with the board that 100,000 dollars of that is for the tank relining. There was only one bid, which is, it's a little unusual, but it's also a specialty type thing. And this company was vetted by EMC, who is gonna be the project manager for this. One of the questions that we frequently ask, get asked is, is there a contingency reserve? There is a contingency reserve. It's 5% on this project. It's called, it's a direct cost associated risk, and it totals, so almost 11,000 dollars should there be things that are kind of unforeseen. According to EMC, who's spearheading this effort, the tank lining itself is pretty clear-cut, and they don't believe that we are going to have issues, but that contingency reserve is nonetheless there. So Randy, I think it would be good just to let the board know that this is a technical project in the sense that, you know, you know more about the anti-vortex plate and the life safety component of this particular project. EMC had to hire an engineer, so you're gonna see on this that over 24,000 dollars, 11% of this project is in engineering services. And they did, right, they did detailed drawings on all this.
They did a nice job putting these guys together, started working, what needs to be done to, for the issues that we had with our cistern tank. As we went to the feed, that coming out of the tank had a number of turns that should not be there, and the distance between the tank and where the pipe turned and went into our pump was too close to actually the cistern tank. So they had to move the piping over, extended the distance before that turn, and took a 90-degree turn into the pump, and then put a two-foot section in and then a reducer before it got to the pump, before it went from the turn. The 90-degree turn had a small reducer into the pump, which, and because it was so close, if the pump was called on, it had a very great possibility of cavitating, which means sucking in air as it was trying to pump water. And if it sucked air while it was turning, at the rate in which it was turning, the pump would have blown. And that was, that was the whole drive to this. Take a lot of those turns that were in there when it was built in 1990, to take them out. That's why it had to be pushed, recoil, forward pole in the wall, pass the hole that's there, extend the piping, take some, a lot of the turns that were in and out of it, and then put a greater distance between the turn and the reduction before it actually went into the pump.
So I think, with that being said, we've talked about this project for a fairly, you know, long time, months now. This is phase two of it. I would be curious, you know, with Randy here, are there any questions that are of a technical nature for Mr. Loring?
If I can ask, even though there are no questions, and thank you for that. The bigger driver, so three years ago, we did the first phase of this, and this is phase two. What drove that, the phase two part, is the inspection when we first inspected the tank three years ago. We put a submersible into the tank in an amount of material, dirt, we just collected into the tank, and then when they went in and actually pumped the water out, cleaned off the vortex plate, and realized just how brittle that tank, that plate was. And if you agree, same vortex plate, or anti-vortex plate, what is that? It's actually a plate that sits over the suction eight-inch tube, a pipe, a piping that goes through the tank into the pump, and that plate sits over the top of it. And what that does is, that's drawing in water to pump water up to the building, to the sprinkler system. It does not let the water go into a whirlpool, kind of similar to like, you know, the kids in the pool running around the outside of the pool, and it automatically creates a little whirlpool, where that vortex plate stops that from happening, so that the water can't spin, causing cavitation as the water's being pulled into the pump. It eliminates that from happening. So that was a bigger part of that, that they, the people that were putting the cement on three years ago said, you've got issues here that you really can't address right now. I'm only gonna put on this temporary coating, so you're gonna have to come back and revisit these issues, which we're doing now. And with the coating that is going on now, last time they did it was a three-year coating, with the dam tank, the folks that are doing this application are putting a coating that lasts 30 years, so that every five years, the only thing that we will be doing is just looking inside the tank, making sure everything is fine, and just basically doing a pressure, a pressure test on the pump and flow rates on the pump, to making sure that it's still meeting the specifications to supply water to the pump.
So if that is, thank you, Randy, for all that. And Brady wanted to thank you for two additional SAT words, vortex and cavitation. So, the, it would be motion number, I'm sorry, motion number five, if there is a board member so inclined.
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, just a quick question. I see that we do have a cost breakdown. Do we have a timeline breakdown that's also established within this RFP?
We put the, I put it down from June 23rd to August 23rd. It's, I don't believe it's going to take that long, but I put it down for the first summer, just in case there was an issue that we had the time to correct it. So right now, we're thinking it's gonna be about four weeks.
Did they give us a breakdown of major milestones of, you know, when they're gonna be doing what work, and when testing's gonna be taking place, anything like that? To make sure?
The testing will be done at the very end, after the tank is rebuilt again. And we're working with the Gresping Water Department. We're gonna use the tank that serves on a very slow fill, so we don't set those pressure, the pressure pump off for the town, causing other issues. So that will be done. All that testing is done with a certification, and a sign-off from the fire department will be there and be present at that as well. As when it is completed, everything goes back together, this is okay, then the flow test is done on the pump again, just to make sure that it's still meeting the parameters that we need to supply water.
Great. Let me ask the question differently. What date would that be?
Like I said, Jared, I have it down from June 23rd to the, towards end of August. But I'm saying, do I have an exact date that I can give you to say it's going to be August 12th? I don't have that date for you.
You know, I would say the vendors know that, of the window, and they have a shortest that it's gonna be done within the window. Whether it is done in the beginning, or as soon as school ends, or whether it is done in mid-July, that we don't know just yet.
7:31, Jared.
Is that tentatively scheduled?
Substantial completion, which would be probably at the stage where the tank is being rebuilt.
And the reason why I ask that is, everybody knows I'm a project management professional, and when we look at this, we look at milestones of when major activity's gonna be completed to see, hey, are we meeting schedule? Do we need to crash the schedule and maybe have to spend a little bit more money and use some of those change controls? So hopefully, as we move forward with other bids that we get from other vendors, they'll give us a timeline, not just a cost breakdown as part of that, you know, request for proposal if we could.
I missed it, Jared, it was in, it was in there.
Great.
I would, I just would remind the board as well, during this duration of time, the middle school will not be in use. So we'll still have staff, administrative staff that are still working there, but we have no summer programs that will be at Mountain View this summer. We've made arrangements for those programs to either be housed at the elementary schools or at Goffstown High School.
Alright, so if there's no other questions or comments, is anybody ready to read number five, the motion? Go ahead, Jack.
I move to accept the total bid from Impact Fire and Amtech for the MVMS Fire Cistern Project in the amount of 285,392, which includes a 5% project contingency reserve and to authorize the business administrator to execute all needed documents between parties.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Rheta? Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Teachers and staff? And were yes? A motion passed. Alright, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I might ask, Scott, I'm sorry I didn't mention this earlier. If we did the CIP matrix now, then we could have Randy go home. I think that was the only other thing that we had Randy scheduled for.
Sure.
If the board would be amenable to slightly adjusting the schedule so that Mr. Loring doesn't have to stay...
So that would be under new business, I guess, C?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Scott.
It's alright.
I hadn't, and I just don't want Randy to have to...
Alright. So I believe this was discussed a little bit at the last school board meeting in terms of the timeline for the town's capital improvements plan. And we are doing our presentation in, I think, the first week of June. That being said, the submission date is this week, and in the past, our timing has not aligned well with the board retreat, which we normally would go over this. So, a couple of things I wanted to share from the get-go. One, Jack, Stephen, and Randy learned the hard way that CIP changed their process last year. And projects, there are some projects that will no longer show on the CIP that the school provides, and those are predominantly IT-related, and there are also some facilities related in which there are projects, regardless of the amount, but they're, they're done repetitively every, every year, or, so in the case of we're replacing computers, since it's an ongoing replacement cycle, that is not part of CIP any longer. Randy had the replacement of floor scrubbers, things like that, because it's done on an annual basis, we cycle through them, those are no longer appearing. So with that, the superintendent asked us to not only submit this year's CIP listing, but also to create another one that represents only IT spending. And you'll see that when we are at your board retreat, we're gonna cover some of that. But I wanna focus in on what is going to the CIP, or what we're proposing to go, and that, I wanted, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna reference just a couple of things for you. For 26, 27, this is, would be the teacher contract, and then GESS is, would be the first year for that particular contract. In terms of new projects, everything here is the same, except for there's about five or six that are new. So this would be project number two at Bartlett, move vestibule door wall. This is new. This was brought to our attention by Principal Pischka with respect to the, where the existing wall is right now. It would be, it is less than ideal from a security perspective, and Randy has gotten a couple of estimates with respect to moving that wall to create a more secure vestibule. You'll note that it is in the first year of the CIP, and the reason being is that we believe that there is a likelihood that there will be another round of what's called safe grants from the state. there will be another round of what's called safe grants from the state. By putting it in the first available year, it does show the urgency of the project if we were to apply for that safe grant and be successful in getting it. So that's a new one. If you go all the way down, and then, and there really is no reason why it's in, on the Maple Avenue versus Bartlett side, but the board decided at their last meeting to change the new school from a middle school to an elementary school. And that was, that was on this particular CIP. It's in column O, which is 2031, 2032. You'll note that the price tag has not changed, simply because going out that far, there's a strong likelihood that that's what the cost will be. It could easily be $70 million to build a new elementary school. So that is there as a placeholder. I wanted to also bring to your attention the year, column L, 2829. You're going to see, this was where we originally talked about a bond or municipal lease. It's also the year in which the current Honeywell Performance Contract expires. So it may be advantageous to take advantage of that, whether it be a bond or a municipal lease. More will be discussed about that at the, at the board's retreat. If you go to page number two, under Glen Lake School, very similar to Bartlett, line number 21, that is also new. Again, trying to create a more secure area at Glen Lake School. Again, we put it in 2627 for the hope that we might get a safe grant because of that. If you go down, Mountain View Middle School, line number 27, replace carpet in information center and band room with other flooring. So it might not necessarily be the existing carpet. We might be going back with other type of material. There's easier to clean and less issues with laminate type flooring and other vinyl plank flooring. You'll see there that it's in 2728. And if you ask folks at Mountain View, they would want this to happen yesterday. So we'll, more on that one. And I think we'll discuss that a little bit more at the retreat as well. Going to page number three, now we're at Goffstown High School, line number 51. It's about halfway through, halfway down the page. It'll say replace duct collection system in wood shop. And again, that's one that we learned that current system is older. It is not as effective as it used to be, and it's going to warrant replacement. So that is also new. And then.
It should say dust.
Dust. All right.
It's not a duck.
Okay. And then on the last page, line number 67, replace public address system at Goffstown High School. That is new. That is in the year 2030, 2031, at a cost of approximately $200,000. And then the only other thing, again, this is from administration's recommendation. So this is a board decision as to how you wish us to proceed. Line 72, capital reserve fund deposit. There is an increment, there's an increase of $50,000 in these years, recognizing that the cost of doing things is going up. We stabilized it in the, in the last particular year, but it's trying to get up to $500,000. And that would be a baseline of where I think we need to be, given all that we have here. So those are the major highlights of it. I wanted to let newer board members and certainly the public know that this capital improvements plan is a planning tool. It is not a budget tool. Because it's on here doesn't mean it's going to definitely happen. There are different funding sources, such as the budget itself, the capital reserve fund, municipal lease purchases, grants, CRF, you name it. And that's where the board then has to make decisions as to which one has higher priority. But I want to thank Stephen, Borjettor IT Director, and Randy especially, and Dawn Taber. They have spent a lot of time, you know, on this document. And as, as the superintendent had stated when we met a week or two ago, we've come a long way, baby, on this one. I mean, this one was.
You weren't supposed to tell him I said that.
Well, I don't know if you said those words precisely, but we have come a really long way. And, and we had gotten not so great feedback from the Budget Committee, I don't know, four or five years ago, and they, they really kind of demanded this. And I think it's been a really good tool for us. So are there any questions, or is there anything on here that you think should be changed? I ask this because it's due by the end of the week.
So yeah, so we have to make a motion tonight. I don't see any hands. Sorry. So if there's no questions or comments, is anybody?
There's a motion.
Number six.
That would be number six, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
How much is the administration's amendment, the 2025, 2026 school district CIP as presented without, oh, actually, the only change is from duck to dust. Minor change.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Ginny.
Ginny, second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, teachers and students? Yes, we are unanimous. Thank you, Randy. Have a good night.
Thanks, Randy.
All right. So we're going to go back.
We're back to.
Thank you for being flexible. I appreciate it.
That way you can go home.
Finance reports. Now we're under C, retirement stipend payments using FY25 funds. I included a memo to the board in your packets. This is something that we have done for a very long time, whereby we have contractually obligated retirement stipends that would be payable typically on July 1. But if there are funds available in the current budget, we have historically paid them in mid-June of the, of the current school year. So right now, we have three employees in the Goffstown School District that are retiring at the end of this year. The value of those three stipends is $55,000, based upon those employees' years of service to the district. And based upon our projected fund balance that both Doug and I have worked on, as well as what is in the current line for retirement stipends, there is no doubt that we have the capacity to pay these stipends out in mid-June of this year. And if the board concurs with that, then there is a suggested motion.
Number two.
Which is number two.
Any questions, comments? Does somebody want to read number two?
I'll do it. My motion to authorize the administration to pay the presented and contractually obligated retirement stipends totaling $55,000 using the encumbered funds from the fiscal year 25 budget.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Jack?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Jack. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, student and teachers? They're yes. Motion passed.
Right. Next on your agenda is D, Power School Cyber Security Review. And there will be discussion in non-public about this. But I wanted to share in public session to update the community. The school district filed an insurance claim with Primex as a result of the Power School cybersecurity incident that occurred in December of 2024. Primex contracts with a cyber insurance firm called Beasley for both defense and indemnification of cyber-related insurance claims. In doing so, the Goffstown School District separately, as well as the New Boston School District, engaged with a law firm, McDonald Hopkins, to assist in a legal analysis and response to a recent data security incident concerning Power School with respect to student information and the breach of that. The law firm McDonald Hopkins completed their review of the matter recently, and their letter to the Goffstown School Board will be discussed in a non-public session tonight. The context of the McDonald Hopkins analysis was based on Power School's handling of student information as it relates to both New Hampshire RSAs and federal laws such as FERPA. The review did not include Power School's contractual obligations to the school district. That matter will also be discussed in non-public session under New Hampshire RSA 91A, both C and L, most particularly L. So the, at that particular time, after you review the legal opinion, the board has the prerogative of releasing that legal opinion to the public. That is, that is your prerogative. So I can't go over the substance of that at this particular point, but, but recognizing that, that's something that you'll talk about later. And then the other part of it is more of the contractual obligation. There are two distinct things.
Two separate issues.
Two separate issues. One is, did they follow New Hampshire and federal law, Power School? Did they do that? And then the second one is, is that was there a breach of contract between Power School, on Power School's part? And if so, what actions does the board want to take with respect to that? So that's really the gist of the non-public. Going further on the agenda, letter E is special ed bus transportation vendor solicitations. Also is a memo in your packet with respect to that. So as of right now, we do have, we have multiple transportation providers for special education transportation. Durham Transportation is our current special ed provider for in district for both Goffstown and New Boston. And they also handle the majority of out-of-district transportation for special needs students. That said, there have been instances in which Power School cannot satisfy our needs for out-of-district placements. And we have used, I think, four very small providers to provide those, those levels of transportation. As I have mentioned to this board on previous occasions, transportation has been a very challenging thing for school districts to contend with. There are not very many providers in the state. The special education transportation is even more challenging because our needs in Goffstown and New Boston require a larger company that can provide 14 to 15 in-district routes during the school year. And while there are a lot of smaller companies that can do four or five routes, especially out-of-district ones, there are very few companies that can do in-district transportation. We have also seen, similar to regular ed transportation, where RFPs can be tricky because you might only get one RFP. And a lot of business administrators have gone to requesting proposals, solicitations, and asking for a proposal rather than a formal bid document. That being the case, we do know that both Durham Transportation and our current regular education provider, which is STA, have expressed interest in a special ed transportation contract for in-district and out-of-district transportation. That being said, I think it would behoove us as a district to break this into two pieces for the sake of getting pricing. So one of them would be to obtain proposals on the in-district and out-of-district, and then another proposal for just out-of-district, which would allow us to go and get competitive pricing on smaller providers. So with that, you'll see that I have two suggested motions here. You know, one of them deals with the larger, the in-district piece, and that's getting proposals from Durham and STA. And our goal on, in terms of a timeline, is mid-August. The reason why we need mid-August is that we'll be building the budget for the next school year, and we need to know what the pricing is. And that will give the board the opportunity to hear what those pricing proposals are, and to make a selection so that we can plug that in to our budget. The second motion deals with smaller providers, and our special ed director, oftentimes when we contact the current provider, they may not be able to get transportation for a student. We don't have a choice. We have to find, you know, transportation within a week sometime. So therefore, it gives us some flexibility to use a smaller vendor. And there are, like I said, three or four that we're currently using. Are there any questions from the board with respect to what this request is about? And were the motions?
I don't see any.
Scott, can you also, I didn't, I didn't think you said it.
Oh, I didn't, yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the new ownership?
Yeah. So Durham notified us that they were purchased by a venture capital company. They do not anticipate any changes to their level of operations. So this is, one of the things that we, I mentioned in the admin finance committee is that, and Brian helped me on this one, but I think 10 years ago, there was a significant buyout or consolidation of a lot of these smaller companies. And as a result, there are just very few companies that, that are providing this service. So either you, you've got a choice between two, maybe three in the state that'll do the larger districts. And then there are a lot of mom and pop type transportation companies that will do your out-of-district placements on a, as-needed basis.
Yeah. So just to let the community know, we were notified that Durham School Services, their parent company, Mobaco here, Scott, I've got that right, that they're selling Durham School Services to I Square Capital. So that's going to be a new owner of our transportation company. Just wanted the community to be aware, and this was a surprise to us.
Yeah. All right. Does anybody make questions, comments? If not, entertain a motion for number three and four. If somebody wants to read it, go ahead, Jack.
I move to authorize the business administrator and special education director to solicit proposals from both Durham Transportation and STA for both in-district and out-of-district transportation needs for the 2026, 2027 through 2029, 2030 school years, due by mid-August 2025.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
I'll second Vanessa.
Vanessa, thank you, Vanessa. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, student and teachers? And everybody's yes. Motion passed. So we'll need number four.
Okay. I'll go again.
Go ahead, Jack.
I move to authorize the business administrator and special education director to solicit proposals from smaller special education transportation providers for out-of-district transportation needs for the 2627 through 2029, 2030 school years, due by mid-August 2025.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
I'll second again, Vanessa.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, teachers and students? Everybody's yes. Motion passed. All right, Scott.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Letter F is school district capital reserve fund history. This is just informational, updated this listing for you. You'll note that we did, in, you know, reserve on this listing funds for the Mountain View Systern Project, $300,000. So hopefully, that comes in less than that, as well as the MVMS core switches. We postponed the high school one. So we'll have, again, with, hopefully, we'll see some interest income as well in terms of expendable or un, or spendable or unallocated, $158,289, hopefully by October. We have reserved two rounds of $50,000 for the replacement of the turf field. So I just wanted to give this to the board as, as a update. And if it comes up for it during your retreat, you have that information. Letter G, draft 2627 school budget schedule. This is something that hopefully will be helpful to both Jared and Jack. I did speak with them about this. It's the same pattern as in the prior years, where the first meeting in October is a joint presentation. There are two nights with both the school board and the budget committee. The budget committee was in favor of doing this as well. We have, on, on the internal side of things, the deadlines for schools to submit requests for staffing, et cetera, those, we, we've kind of changed those a little bit. But from the board's perspective, you'll see that we have to get this budget to the budget committee by Halloween. So it's a very similar schedule than what you've had, you know, in the past, and it aligns with your meetings. There is, when you do set your school board meeting dates, you'll note that there's an optional day. Depends upon whether or not you need that day to deliberate on the budget. So that's, again, more informational. And also, which is also informational in your packet, as I asked Denise to include the revenue and expense reports. Again, that's just wanted to keep you informed. We are putting a lot of those on the school district website as well, as well as the check registers and the check manifest summary. So those are being updated as we go along. And that is it for me for now.
All right. Thank you, Scott. All right. Budget committee report, Jared?
No meetings.
All right. Sounds good. C and E, Ginny?
I don't have.
I don't have my meeting. The C and E committee reviewed the standards-based report card pilot and discussed the next steps. And the materials we brought to the meeting for you tonight in the blue folder, and they include a sample of this year's pilot report card for both Mountain View and the elementary schools. Note, last spring, only a spreadsheet of the proposed standards was provided. Recommended standard revisions for grades one through six was developed collaboratively by staff and administration, parent feedback, including survey results, and a summary of comments. Also, a brief PowerPoint outlining the history and development of the pilot, as well as the intention to use Power School to communicate progress with parents regularly in grades one through four. We are all, this is all ready, being used at Mountain View in grades five and six. The committee unanimously recommends these standards be brought to the full board for approval. No, no vote. I'm sorry, I've got a cough dropping my mouth. Is being requested this evening. The board members received PDF files by email tonight, and we're giving you this blue folder with all of the printed handouts for your convenience, and we'll be looking for approval at the next meeting. Feel, please look through this and feel free to reach out to Wendy with any questions that you might have, that you want answered, so you come ready at the next meeting to go ahead and discuss and vote. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ginny. Do you have any more meetings this year?
And our next meeting is on, no, next meeting.
Next year.
Next year, all right. P and C, Rheta?
Yes, P and C met this evening, and given that it was Vanessa and Laura's first full meeting, we spent a little time reviewing our work plan and looking forward to our work plan for the upcoming year. As you may have heard previously, we're talking about creating informational, two-page handouts regarding specific topics. We had, we had brought the idea about a informational piece on the budget process, and our goal would be to get that done before we actually enter into the budget process. And this is intended for the general public that might have questions, or we're often telling them, you know, that it's a good time to participate in October when we're going over the budget. Anyways, there were several ideas that we talked about, including, you know, what, what does the school board do, how to use public comment, and also thinking about into the future for the elections, a piece on those that might be considered, considering joining the school board. We'll have one more meeting on June 2nd. We have, and we'll, we'll discuss this further, we also will have non-public this evening to discuss the scholarships that we do each year. I also wanted to talk about the retreat agenda a little bit, and Brian has been developing an agenda, and we had talked about the, the self-evaluation that we have been doing annually, and we've decided to suspend this for now. It's not required to do every year, but maybe take a break. We do have a really full retreat agenda, so that would give our committee some time to think about, you know, what would be a best approach to doing that. So unless anyone has any concerns about that, we will not do the board's self-reflection this year. And that is it.
Yes, go ahead.
I would maybe just add one thing, Rheta, if I may. The public comment that we had this evening regarding the advertising in schools policy that is on the retreat agenda, so I just wanted to let you know that we were planning on having some targeted discussion regarding that, that topic.
Thank you, Brian. All right, policy review, Shane?
Thank you. So the policy review committee met last Monday. We continue to pick through the required-by-law policies that we have in our queue. There will be a number of policies coming up for the Q and A or second read tonight, which will be up for adoption at our next meeting. Then there's a batch of policies that are also in your packet for first read tonight.
And no?
And we are not meeting again until next year.
Right, thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
All right, superintendents' report.
Thank you. Just a few quick things this evening. So Mr. Gross mentioned this, I just wanted to make sure we highlight this. Scott has added the manifests and historical financial reports. Scott, you go back, you went back three years, right?
Two.
Two years? So if anyone's interested, the citizens petition warrant article for the check register that was put on, we use this as an opportunity to share more information. So these manifest summaries are, you heard one this evening, so those have all been archived for the last several years. So I wanted you to thank Scott and Doug and the team for making that happen. Mrs. McCann let a little bit of the cat out of the bag about SAT testing, and I'm going to be careful, Mrs. Kohler, I'm going to be really good, you're going to be proud of me. We have embargoed data that I can't share with you, but I'm excited to share with you. So I can't share anything, but I'm really excited to share more information, and I'm most excited specifically to talk more about Bartlet when I have the ability to do so. So more to come on that. Unfortunately, it won't be until the fall, right, Mrs. Kohler, when we're able to kind of share more about that? But spoiler alert, it's going to be some good news. So we're excited about that. I wanted to make sure that the area subcommittee members, that we have a date of June 11th at 6:00 PM. I believe that date works for New Boston. So those of you who are on the joint area subcommittee, we do plan on having a meeting in June. If you could just confirm your availability on 6/11. And my last piece is I'm excited to report that over April vacation, we had the nightlock project was essentially finished. Actually, after we had our P and C meeting in one of the high school classrooms, I got to show the product. So at least those two board members got to see that in action this evening. We still have about 20 doors across the, all the schools in Gofftown that Mr. Loring is still working on finding some kind of unique solutions for. Those include areas where asbestos is present. So we've, we've got them all done, with the exception of about 20 doors that Randy's still working on. So that's been a big project. I, again, like to extend my appreciation to the citizens that brought that citizens petition warrant article. I know it was a little rocky, I didn't really agree with some of the language in the beginning, but this has been a good project, and I'm very glad that we've been able to add the nightlocks and the supplemental locks on all the doors. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has, either for me, for Mr. Gross, for Mrs. Kohler, for Mr. Totten, Mr. Borget here, so I'm happy to drag him in as well.
I see Rheta's hand. Go ahead, Rheta.
Yeah. Brian, I had some questions regarding the letter of compliance that you signed on April 7th, and I've, and I've already talked with you, and I found it really helpful. It came up in your, in your superintendent's report, and I was wondering if you could just add a little bit of background behind that, because, you know, as the board were aware of some of the compliance that's coming forward.
Yes. So I had shared with the board that superintendents were presented with a requirement to sign a letter that pertains to Title VI, which is a federal statute from 1964. And I shared that I had no issue, that we were fully compliant with Title VI. There were a lot of school, this ended up becoming a pretty contentious thing between, well, I think some school districts. So there were about a half a dozen school districts that wouldn't, that wouldn't sign the letter. I was not in that camp. I had a very lengthy conversation with Commissioner Ettleblow about this. My interpretation of the letter was, it was simply asking, are you in compliance with the Title VI requirements from 1964? And the answer to that was yes. And by the way, every school district is presented with a requirement to sign off on, every year you have to sign the general assurances that says that you're compliant with all these laws. So the school districts that refused to sign it, I, I think I would say to them, but you signed the general assurances for this year. You're taking the federal money. And if you refuse to sign this, you're potentially jeopardizing federal funds. So I think a lot of people were concerned in why this became, this became a political issue, because there were a lot of people that thought, maybe I shouldn't have signed the letter. I would disagree with that assessment. It was not indicating that we agree with any particular set of beliefs or executive orders from the president. It was simply, are you in compliance with the Title VI from 1964? And the answer to that was yes. So I would, if there are community members that have questions about why I agreed to sign that, I would encourage anyone to give me a call, I'm happy to talk it through more, but that's a high-level summary of why.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Rheta. Thank you, Brian. Anyone else? All right, are you, are you all set?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, moving on to old business, Shane?
All right, so we have, let's see, what, seven or so policies that you guys received in our last meeting, that if anyone has any questions that we can discuss, we're obviously happy to go through that.
Anyone? Questions, comments?
If there are no questions or suggestions, they would be up for adoption at our next meeting on June 2nd, so.
I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone.
All right.
I know Jared and I had discussed, I believe it was KI.
Let's see, it's not listed there, it's a J, for some reason.
There was one policy that Jared was going to send me some information or some suggestions. We have not done that yet.
Okay.
So I think what the, we had a conversation before the meeting, and Jared's going to send me those suggestions, and then we can kind of do a little finagling and see what we come up with on June 2nd.
Yeah, that works. Maybe even email it to the board once you come up with something, so they can read it first and then be able to vote on it on the 2nd.
Yep, yep. Yeah, you guys will get, will get information from me before the 2nd, so.
Okay.
So yeah, we have a little bit of time now, so.
Perfect. All right, so moving on. So new business, so Scott is going to give a mini-review.
Yes. So tonight, we're going to be just talking a little bit about the SAU 19 IT department, and the superintendent asked that I take a look at the IT department and to kind of conduct, you know, a very limited operational review to determine what the current processes are, what are some of the challenges facing the department, because he, he and the senior leadership team needs to make decisions with respect to funding, staffing, et cetera. I want to say first and foremost that in terms of, you know, what I did, I interviewed all of the IT staff. These interviews were an hour and a half to three hours. Stevens was on the higher end, obviously. And just to try to give you some, some background, over the last four or five years, especially at the start of COVID, where we were forced over a weekend to go remote, the IT department has been responsible for implementing significant initiatives, including remote learning, learning management system, which is School-A-G, security camera and door access controls, which were grant-funded largely, employee staff training, hardware and software rollouts, and just numerous IT data and compliance requirements. So there's just been a whole lot of activity. My big takeaway from spending, I spent about six to eight weeks doing, doing these interviews, is that we have a very talented IT team. And I also learned a lot of what I did not know, and that is, there is a lot going on in, in SAU 19. And on page three of, of what I presented to you, there's 10 folks who are responsible for the IT needs of SAU 19, which includes Gofftown and New Boston. And there are, in terms of their level of support, there are 500-plus full and part-time staff members and coaches who require IT services. We have over 3,200 students who require IT services, along with their parents, who sometimes require IT support for platforms like School-A-G and Power School. So this is not just students, it's not just staff, it's also parents. In terms of what I did not know, which I do know now, is the volume of IT equipment. So we have over 3,000 devices that are being managed by the department. That includes desktops and laptops and tablets, 261-plus printers, copying machines, backend hardware such as servers and switches, 650-plus telephones, 172-door access points, because again, we, we've switched on, now we're on access controls. We have Wi-Fi in all of our buildings, and we have 342 access points, 121 software applications, and almost 500 web-based and mobile applications that are supported by IT. I'm not going to go through the recommendations in detail, but I wanted to share with you that I took a look at four different subgroups. What is our current staffing and what are some recommendations for staffing going forward in the short term and in the medium term? In the short term is under a year, the medium term is one to three years. I also made recommendations to IT processes and procedures, and I was able to glean a lot of information from talking with the IT staff, as well as staff in some of our schools. IT assets is a big one, and if you look at that listing that I provided you, that now, now separated capital assets for the IT department, it's significant. And, and if you take a look at it, it is probably on average every year, $700,000 of spend, maybe more. So as I mentioned to the A and F committee this evening, it, I don't think it, you don't need a PhD to determine that if you have a lot of older IT equipment, you're going to have more breakdowns, less reliability, more frustration between staff, as opposed to having newer devices. And unfortunately, in our district, we have a lot, we have too much older equipment, which slows us down considerably. And then the last part of it is really about training and making sure that our staff has the, the prerequisite training, the needed training to use these IT assets. So I'm not going to, you know, go into any level of detail, this is something that we could certainly talk about at the board retreat.
Well, Scott, actually, if I can just let the board know, we're going to talk about this in non-public tonight.
Right.
So we have recommendations for staffing for Stevens Department. The, the reason I asked Scott to do this is we know we have limited resources, and we know we need to put more support into the IT department. So I wanted Scott to look at where is that support best placed? So we're going to have, we have a whole proposal to talk about with the board and non-public this evening, so there will be much more discussion about this.
All right.
Is that good, Heather?
That was perfect.
All right.
Thank you, Scott.
And interested, people who are interested in this handout, it'll be part of the minutes.
All right.
So everyone will be able to see that.
All right, moving on to FY '22 fund balance discussion.
Yeah, so I have Doug here as well. So Doug and I worked on your fund balance discussion, you should have a handout in your packet, and it looks, it looks like a spreadsheet, believe it or not. And when we look at fund balance, our fund balance, for the most part, is comprised of an over-collection of what was budgeted revenues and an underspend of the budget. That's the lion's share of it. There's also some subtle things that go in, in terms of increases and encumbrances and things like that. To summarize, right now, we're projecting about a $2,157,000 unassigned fund balance of, this is to offset taxes, okay? Our target was 1.7, so we're about $457,000 to the good. That number, as we get closer to the end of the year, we'll feel more comfortable with that number. But that's kind of, you know, where we want to let the board know now. So that's a good thing, and it kind of dovetails into, you know, our conversation, our next bit of conversation. But before I go to that next agenda item, I wanted to share with the board that on, we'll discuss this again on June 2nd, and we'll take another look at it, and then we'll have more numbers as we get to your retreat. So the closer we get to the end of the school year, you know, the more that we know. And just as an example, like, there are things that pop up, like today, or this last week, we learned another $20,000 expense in the special ed department, like, these things pop, you know? So we have to be, you know, just, you know, recognize, you know, some of those things. Any questions on this projection? Usually, we're super conservative on this, so, all right.
Wait, Jared has. Wait, Jared has something. Go ahead, Jared.
At this point in time, it's, I don't know if it's too early to talk about, but we also talked about keeping a contingency into the next fiscal year. Are you looking to possibly have that at 5% again? Or are we going to be potentially having a different percentage?
Well, can I answer that first and then you can answer that?
Sure.
My recommendation would be to maximize the 5% retainage. And we'll talk a lot about the reasons why. There are a lot of uncertainties and I think this would certainly be a year to maximize the amount that the board could retain in that fund. Scott, your thoughts?
Yeah, and I would agree. There's, there is a ton of uncertainty. That being said, probably at your next meeting and on, in June, we will ask the board to take a vote on the amount that will be held in that contingency, Jared. And even if that number is the same as what's currently in there, as you know, after the audit, you got another shot at it. But I would, as the superintendent mentioned, there is a lot of uncertainty going on with education funding and revenues, so.
And the cost of things. You know, so we're concerned about the potential impact of the cost of things.
Yeah, so I would say more to follow. I can certainly say that our recommendation is if we have the ability to fully fund it at 5%, which again, that's 1.7 million and change. So that's another 400 and some odd thousand dollars. So if that opportunity presented itself, yes, we would recommend it.
Thank you.
All right. So if that is the case, we are going to talk to you a little bit about the teacher laptop lease replacement and the repurposing for student cards and tariffs and uncertainty. So first off, I should disclose to the board that I prepared this memo to you on Friday, Thursday or Friday. There was news today about tariffs and deals. And again, it's, for folks who deal in the financial world, like, it's really difficult to try to manage, manage these things. The prices of things already went up considerably, about 15% when we first talked about and budgeted for. That was Steven in September of last year, when we set the budget, they went up 15%. So that being the case, I gave you an amended, so it should say amended on your sheet. So if it doesn't, I need you to, hopefully it says amended on your, on this memo. Can you just double-check that it says amended on it? And here's another copy if it doesn't say amended on it. All right. Hold on. And I might have more copies of it. So there's a couple of new data points that we got and I'll just, if you don't have a copy, I'll get you a copy. So when we did our budget, it was, we allocated about $148,000 to $150,000 for leasing our staff laptops. And unfortunately, the cost of that lease was much higher. So there are three issues that we're dealing with. The cost of replacement laptops has increased approximately 15% due to the current tariff situation. There is continued uncertainty about tariffs and/or supply chain issues. You know, when our staff turn over their laptops, it does say made in China. Many of the components are made in foreign countries and then they, sometimes they're assembled here in the U.S., but more often than not, they're not. So there is a lot of uncertainty and there is the concern that cost could increase two to three times as much for the current, as to the current price of a laptop. So bottom line is that the amount that we budgeted for this project, this lease purchase, is inadequate. The ability to stabilize the, and increase the current laptop, student laptop inventory at Mountain View Middle School is based on using all of the usable teacher laptops to be replaced. So when we talked before about Mountain View and the shortage of laptops there and the age of those laptops, it is the IT director's premise that when these teacher laptops were returned as part of the replacement cycle, we would use the ones that are in good shape and put them into circulation for students to use. That is, those laptops that are three years old are far better than the laptops that are anywhere from six to 10 years old currently being used.
Steven has something to say.
For the desktops that are 16 years old that are in service in some of the classrooms on Derek's.
So again, I just wanted to let you know that, that our goal here was, this whole thing is to repurpose the current inventory of staff laptops and to improve our situation with our student laptops. So in terms of cost considerations, the current cost includes an extended warranty and repairs of 510 devices, and that's a little over half million dollars, $501,840. And the annual lease purchase cost of that over three years is $182,000 and change per year. So as you can see, we got a little bit of a shortfall here, about $33,000. So the thought process was, was what would it look like in order to meet the lease objective if we were to outright purchase a certain quantity of laptops? And what we learned in talking, you know, with our IT provider is that we would need to outright purchase 91 laptops at a cost of approximately $90,000 to meet that $148,000 to $150,000 annual lease payment. We also would need to purchase five laptop carts at a cost of a little over $10,000. Due to the uncertainty of things, we have locked in our pricing, I think through the end of this week or maybe early next week. But they have held our pricing because the laptops that we are considering are already in the U.S. and they've been reserved for us. So again, that's, it's a, it's, it's been preliminarily locked in for us, but it's a short, you know, time. The other thing that I wanted to share with you, that there were two other items in which they are IT-related, where in our opinion, administration's opinion, it would make sense for us to spend FY '25 dollars on items that were budgeted in FY '26. So we are just simply pre-buying it in a way. So we had allocated a replacement of 30, replacement iPads for Glen Lake School. That cost is around $12,500 and we're recommending to use fund balance from '25 in order to do that. And then the, the last remaining item, which was not in your original memo, which is in this amended one, was that Steven brought to my attention that we were replacing a computer lab at GHS and we budgeted $25,000 for that. And so we're also recommending to purchase those devices now using FY '25 fund balance. And with the caveat that those 20, the FY '26 funds would go unspent and be part of the FY '26 fund balance, so we're not going to spend it twice. We're just buying it now, two months ahead of time, to take advantage of the current pricing. So our recommendation in total, we recommend that the board authorize using up to $137,820 of FY '25 fund balance from greater-than-expected revenue. So one of the things that we noticed was that we have about $140,000 more in revenues based upon much greater investment earnings from our accounts. So the interest rate environment is really good right now and I don't think, I know I didn't plan on that. I thought things would dip down again and they've still been really strong. So on the revenue side, we have more revenue because of investment earnings. We also have an underspend in the budget, but that's besides the point. So the monies are there from interest income alone to purchase the above IT equipment and to immediately enter into a three-year lease purchase agreement to mitigate the cost increases that may arise due to tariffs and/or other factors. So what you'll see is that to buy those laptops, those 91 laptops is around $90,000. The five new carts is $10,320. The Glen-like iPads, which again are budgeted in FY '26, are $12,500. And the GHS computer lab is budgeted at $25,000 for a total of $137,820. So that's our, that's our recommendation, is to try to take advantage of locked-in pricing now. It also gives us the opportunity to secure these laptops so that we can deploy them in the summertime as best we can. If we, the longer that we delay, there's a greater likelihood of supply chain issues, which then compounds an issue of us now having a rollout that could go into November or longer. So those are the other operational considerations. Are there any questions for Steven or myself?
I don't see anyone's hands up. Any questions? Comments? All right. There's a motion on the amended form. If somebody is ready to read that.
I can do it, Heather.
Is that Vanessa?
Vanessa.
Thank you.
I need to authorize the business administrator and IT director to expend up to $137,820 of the FY '25 fund balance for the purposes of funding the following four projects as presented, staff laptop purchase, NVMS laptop carts, Glen Lake iPads, GHS computer lab replacement.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Vanessa. Second by Laura. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Abstaining? Teachers and students? Yes. All right. So we have one no and the rest yes. So motion passed. And the teachers, so yes. Students?
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, first reads. Shane.
All right. So we have a couple of first-read policies for you all tonight. The first three there, so A, D, C, G, B, E, D, and J, I, C, G. Those are essentially the same policy, they're just coded for different categories, with the A being like the, the general or foundational category, the J, I said A, the A being the foundation category, the J being the student category and the G being the personnel category. But those policies are all exactly identical, they just go into different categories. The next one is Policy IC, which we're actually looking to consolidate some other policies into. We currently have IC, ICA, and ID. Policy IC will actually contain all of ICA and ID. So moving forward, we're going to recommend that we have Policy IC on the books while getting rid of Policy ICA and ID, as all that language will be into IC. So you guys, we'll have some time to look at those and we'll have a Q and A at our next meeting on June 2nd, I believe it was.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
All right. Staffing.
On the staffing sheet this evening, for your notification, we have one leave of absence. For your approval, we have two resignations, two teacher resignations. We wish them well.
I'll need a motion for the teacher resignations.
Motion to approve the teacher resignations.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second?
Second, Vanessa.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Teachers and students? Yes. Motion passed.
Next up, we have a co-curricular sports nomination. This is for Sean Hunter, who is one of our paraprofessionals at Mountain View and has been a lacrosse coach in the past and he's working as a volunteer.
Awesome. All right. I'll need a motion to accept the co-curricular.
Motion to accept the co-curricular is presented.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Vanessa.
By Vanessa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Teachers and students? All right. Motion passed.
Okay. On your staffing sheet, the next batch are for all the technology nominations. We're actually going to hold off on those until after non-public when we discuss compensation for that batch. So I'll keep moving on. Teacher nomination, we have, I'm very pleased to announce, hired an occupational therapist. So we'd be looking for your approval for the nomination of Amanda Barrett.
All right. I'll need a motion.
Motion to approve Amanda Barrett as the new occupational therapist.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Vanessa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Teachers and students? Yes. Motion passed.
And lastly, on the sheet, I'm very pleased to announce that we have a nomination for a new administrator at Maple Ave as the special education facilitator. And that name is Bridget Paray. And she is currently the Assistant Director of Special Education for the Merrimack School District and comes to us with a lot of experience. So we're very excited to welcome Bridget to the team at Maple Ave.
Nice.
And this is within budget.
All right. I'll need a motion.
Motion to approve the new special education facilitator for Maple Avenue, which is Bridget Paray.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Vanessa.
By Vanessa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Teachers and students? Everybody says yes. Motion passed. And then the rest, the technology staffing will do in non-public?
Yep.
All right. Top three things. Forgot to put that on.
Yep.
So, again, I was neglecting my job. Let's see. I mean, we have the trip.
Yeah.
I think that was, that was nice, especially with all the pictures. There's a couple of updates and I didn't know, like, with the laptop lease replacement or the mini-operational review, I thought those were very informative. I don't know if either of those appealed to you. Anyone? Top three?
I don't know if we should include the bus, busing. You know, that's a big thing for parents.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that is.
That's a big one.
Yeah.
All right. So busing.
What about the third one?
Did we do the community donation for the locks during the last one, during the last three things?
Yes.
We did?
Yeah, I think we did.
I was going to say to maybe indicate the project is complete and recognize the donation, but I think I already did that.
Well, the meeting operation review might be good.
I'd love to make the top three. I've never done it and.
You're due, Scott.
Let's not do it then because of Scott. Maybe talk about hearing the feedback from the teachers about teacher appreciation that we had at the beginning.
There you go.
So, sorry, Scott. That'd be, that'd be, you know, just throwing it out there, just for Scott's sake.
Okay. So we've got our three things. Yep. And did you guys get in your packets the questionnaire from Plazek and Sanders?
Oh, from our auditor.
Yes. Did everybody get that tonight?
I think it was just us.
Okay. Are you going to email it?
We'll email it.
Okay. So we're going to email those questions to you, just have them read and ready at the next meeting. We're going to go through them one by one and answer them quickly so we can send them to our auditor. Is there any other business that may become before the meeting? Yep, Jared?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I know that we talked about our last meeting about the sale of a certain plot of land that our junior varsity baseball team uses. I didn't know if we have any update from the administration on any progress that's been made or suggestions that we have at this point or when we would be able to have that on our agenda.
We're meeting with the Parks Director tomorrow.
So could we have an update maybe on forethought at our next meeting if possible, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. That works out? You can get it to us? See what happens tomorrow?
Yeah.
It's a challenge. You know, there's, there's no doubt that, and it's not just one baseball diamond, it's two baseball diamonds because, yeah, but this is a massive challenge for us. And we'll, we'll have some ideas, but we don't have a lot of great options.
Yeah, I just think if we understand what the options are, what's been discussed to kind of give the public body an understanding, I think would be very helpful.
Yeah, before we finish up for the year.
And this is on the retreat as well, but if we can try to provide an update prior.
Yeah.
Great. Happy to do that.
All right. So we have non-public. Which one do you want to go into first?
Let's go under 91A32C first, please.
All right. So I'll need a motion to go under RSA 91A32C. By Jack, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Reta. All right. I'm going to do roll call, starting down there. Who's first, Reta?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So we are non-public. We're going to go over to the conference room.